Good evening and welcome to the October 24, 2023 regular meeting of the Gasson County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as a Commissioner of the Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens. For our television audience and live streaming audience, I would like to present our Gasson County Commission, beginning on my far right.
Alan Frayley, Cherrville Township.
I'm Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Cloninger, Dallas Township.
Kim Johnson, Gastonia Township.
Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
And also Commissioner Keger is joining us from via telephone. Commissioner Keger?
Good evening.
At this time, I will ask you to please rise for the invocation given by Commissioner Hovis and the pledge of allegiance given by Commissioner Cloniger.
Please bow with me. Gracious Father, we're here to take care of the business of the county, and we do this by your grace. Your grace empowers us to be advocates for our citizens, advocates for those who do not have advocates, and also, Father, for this community as a whole. Father, we ask your continued blessings on Gasson County as you continue to give us prosper and warmth and wisdom. We ask that in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will do proclamations, commendations, and presentations. The first is given the Judge William Gasson Award. Commissioner Keger was the presenting sponsor, but he is out tonight, so I've asked Commissioner Worley to fill in in that spot. But I wanted to let you know, a very important part of the Board's mission is to encourage the citizens' participation in city government and the community. In 1998, the Gasson County Commission established the annual award bearing the name of Gasson County's namesake Judge William Gasson from 1778 to 1844 to recognize those volunteers who had demonstrated exemplary commitment, dedication, and leadership, since its establishment of the Gasson County Commission has honored 66 recipients for their service in Gasson County. Commissioner Worley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my privilege tonight to invite Dr. Crystal Maddox to come to the podium and anyone that you have with you, Dr. Maddox. You're alone tonight, but that's fine. You're here with all of us.
Hey, surprise.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for coming up. Well, as I said, it is, as the chairman alluded to, this is the Judge William Gasson Award. And tonight, we recognize Dr. Crystal Maddox. She's a family physician, a disability rights advocate, a bestselling children's book author, a wife and a mother. She's currently an outpatient family medicine physician and primary care service line physician, medical director with Caramont Medical Group. She graduated from East Carolina University, the Brody School of Medicine, Greenville, North Carolina, the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, and North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University in Greensboro. After completing her internship and residency at ECU Brody School of Medicine and Vidant Medical Center in Greenville, she began working as a primary care physician within the Caramont Medical Group, caring for individuals of all ages and for patients within a local skilled nursing facility. Her patient population is diverse and includes a large Spanish-speaking population, children and adults with developmental disabilities, as well as patients from a variety of cultural and socio-economic backgrounds. She's focused on providing culturally competent, accessible, patient-centered care in an efficient and caring manner. She's a system innovator who enjoys experimenting and improving care delivery system to the benefit of patients, staff, and providers. Ever community-focused, Dr. Maddox's advocacy for both local and state boards is coupled with her continuous civic work and extensive list of local and statewide organizations. She also serves as a connector using her personal and professional network for the improvement of individuals and organizations around her. She's optimistic, energetic, empathetic, problem solver, who is not driven by ego but by results. Throughout her medical education and residency, she has been active in advocacy and public health. She served as a Switzer Fellow during medical school, focusing on educating young people about the dangers of marijuana and secondhand smoke. During residency, she participated in a pilot program aimed at teaching family medicine residents how to better serve adults with developmental disabilities. This exposure blended with life experiences began her career as an advocate for individuals with developmental disabilities. Dr. Maddox currently serves as the Gasson County Board of Health and Human Services, has the vice chair, and the North Carolina Academy of Family Physicians Advocacy Committee. She's also served on the Disability Rights, North Carolina Council on Developmental Disabilities, the Jack and Jill of America Piedmont-Gastonia Chapter, Meals on Wheels of Gasson County, and has a Holy Angels volunteer. She was the recipient of the 2022 Duke Energy Citizenship and Service Award and was named Top 40 Under 40 Physician in 2016 by the National Medical Association. Dr. Maddox is a member of the American Academy of Family Physicians, North Carolina Academy of Family Physicians, American Academy of Healthcare Executives, American Medical Association, the North Carolina Medical Society, the North Carolina Public Health Association. In her free time, which I'm not sure where she has any, but she says she has free time. Dr. Maddox has written several children's books. In her first book, Doc Like Mommy, was inspired by her daughter. She loves traveling, having adventures with her husband and children. It is her belief that representation matters, whether it be in medicine or in literature. She strives to make sure that her children, patients, and community live without limitations. Dr. Maddox, the County Commission is honored to present you with the 2023 Judge William Gasson Award in recognition of your compassion, devotion, and professionalism. We are indebted to you for your continued efforts to make Gasson County a better place to live, work, and play. Can we all give Dr. Maddox a hand? And Dr. Maddox, we would invite you to have comments in the award with you. And thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do for our citizens.
Thank you so much. It sounded like a lot when they were reading it, but I feel blessed and grateful to have been here in Gasson County for the past 10 years. I came here straight out of residency, and it has been my new home. It's my children's home. I love serving here. I love the people I get to care for. This is a wonderful community. I cannot think of a better place to serve, work, live, and play. And I'm grateful to everybody here for the work you guys have done throughout COVID, through recovery, and everything that we are doing in this community that's innovative, that's caring, that's really all-encompassing. There are so many great things happening here, and it just makes me proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
While we transition, we have proclamations, commendations, award certificates. Ms. Kathy Cloniger, Commissioner Cloniger, will be making a special introductory remarks along with Commissioner Frayley on this next proclamation. I'm going to ask Commissioner Cloniger to introduce our next guest when she gets down to the podium, and we will move forward from there. So, but congratulations, Doctor. Well deserved, and we look forward to many more blessings that you'll be bringing us. Take your time. Mr. Cloniger.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. We are very honored this evening to welcome two very special people. This is especially exciting for Commissioner Frayley and myself, as Cherrville is our hometown and the Cherrville community has a lot of pride and love for this couple. Darren and Brooke Aldrich are here tonight to receive a special proclamation and recognition of their success in the music industry, but perhaps most of all, they are being recognized for their down-to-earth personalities and for the joyful and positive messages that they share with many fans. Their songs over the years have included a little bit of everything, from gospel to bluegrass to country and to Americana. But through it all, they have never wavered their commitment to offering uplifting songs of hope, aspiration, and love. Some of you may know that Darren Aldrich and his family moved to Cherrville from Avery County when Darren was young. It just so happens that he met his beautiful wife, grew up in Avery County where they eventually met. It seems that they were perfectly fitted to come together through their love for music, and they have certainly come a long way. From singing in church to performing at Jack and Judy Bingham's famous bomb shelter to gracing the stage of the Grand Ole Opry more than 50 times. From performances overseas and countless appearances at prestige venues and events to numerous television appearances, top-of-the-charts hits, and music videos. This couple has done it all, and along the way, they have earned the acclaim and the respect in the industry of their peers. They are both very accomplished vocalists and musicians, and they have surrounded themselves with some amazing talented bandmates. These two multi-award-winning artists have taken the bluegrass and gospel industry by storm. Over the years, they have performed and collaborated with many well-known artists such as the Oak Ridge Boys, Ricky Skaggs, John Cowan of the Doobie Brothers, blues legend Kim Mo, John Oakes of Holland Oaks, country stars Brian White and Hattie Newfield, gospel great Mike Ferris, Barry Bales of Union Station, and many, many more, including Darren's lifelong inspiration and role model was Vince Gill, who remarked about the couple that the sky is the limit for them. They have made such a wonderful contribution to our county and state. Darren has shared his gift and love for music with so many people in our area through his teaching of string instruments over the years, and he and Brooke were both instrumental and supportive in highlighting the rich bluegrass heritage in our region through their involvement with the Earl Scruggs Center. It is my honor to have them here and a real treat to recognize them among friends. At this time, I'd like to welcome Darren and Brooke to the podium. And I also would like to say on a personal note, I will never forget that Darren, when my mother was very sick and on her dying bed, Darren came and sang for my mom, and they both sang at my mom's funeral. So, I love y'all both and thank you for everything, but let's welcome and give them a warm welcome.
I'm going to read the official proclamation at this point, and I just want to thank you both for being here tonight. And you guys are such, come on up here a little bit closer. You guys are such great ambassadors for Cherrville and Gasson County, and as you travel around the United States and the world, we just appreciate what you do and just very pleased to have you here tonight. And here is the proclamation. Whereas IBMA International Bluegrass Music Association Award winners and CMA Gospel Music Association nominees Darren and Brooke Aldrich, known by many in the bluegrass music industry, have achieved nationwide stardom and earned recognition abroad for their critically acclaimed bluegrass, gospel, and Americana catalog. The multi-award-winning husband-and-wife duo has spent nearly two decades cultivating their shared love of music, and their hard work has led to a string of highly celebrated albums and number-one singles. And whereas, together, these two gifted musicians have created a unique sound crafted by rich vocals, accomplished songwriting skills, impeccable instrumentation. Their music reflects their deep roots in North Carolina heritage and traditions. Darren hails from Cherrville, North Carolina, with roots in Avery County, deep in Blue Ridge Mountains where he met his wife, Avery County native Brooke Justice Aldrich. Darren recalls spending time in Avery County as a child, but he always called Cherrville home and spent most of his youth and adult life in Gasson County. Cherrville also is where the couple resides today. Whereas Darren, a longtime veteran of the music business, got his start at around the age of eight years old, playing guitar, eventually branching out to banjo and mandolin. Surrounded by a family of musicians, Darren knew early on music would be a part of his life. He's highly sought after, a multi-instrumentalist, and had several successful stints with well-known bands, including The Country Gentlemen, The Circuit Riders, and The Acoustic Syndicate. In 2017, Darren was named the IBMA's Mentor of the Year by the International Bluegrass Music Association for his contributions to mentoring and teaching music to the youth of the community and for giving back so much to the bluegrass industry. And whereas Brooke, a four-time IBMA Female Vocalist of the Year, grew up in Avery County and graduated from Appalachian State University with a degree in early childhood education. She was encouraged at an early age by her parents to explore singing after She was encouraged at an early age by her parents to explore singing after recognizing her innate ear for music and her strong distinctive voice. She won numerous singing competitions as a youth and was a finalist in the regionals for Nashville Star Competition. Known for outstanding vocals, she also picked up the mandolin and guitar along the way to add to her powerful repertoire. And whereas, while they were both making their way through the circuits, they finally met face-to-face, and the rest, as they say, is history. Their friendship and mutual admiration bonded them professionally in 2005, and their relationship eventually blossomed into something much more. The duo married in 2008 and have been going strong ever since. They knew from very beginning that they wanted their music to inspire and lift people, and they have remained true to those ideals over the years. And whereas, following a gospel album debut, Darren and Brooke have since released eight acclaimed studio albums as well as a concert album. The duo has notched several tracks at the top bluegrass and gospel charts. And their video for gospel single Jordan, released in March of 2023, has already received more than 1 million views and downloads as it's set to appear on forthcoming album with Billy Blue Records. Their unmistakable sound has earned them many accolades and opportunities. Perhaps the biggest dream was recognized in 2017 when they were asked to play at the Grand Ole Opry. They have since graced that storied stage more than 50 times. Whereas, the down-to-earth couple has remained true to their roots and have been recognized locally over the years for their many contributions. In 2010, Darren was named Citizen of the Year in Cherrville, and in 2023, the couple was recognized by the city when renowned Chapel Hill artist Scott Nurkin was commissioned to paint downtown mural to honor Darren and Brooke, and it looks great, by the way. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commission, in recognition of their success and gratitude for the honor they have brought to our county, proclaim October 24, 2023, in Gaston County as Darren and Brooke Aldridge Day. Adopted this the 24th day of October 2023. And I do believe that they are going to grace us with a little music here, everybody, so enjoy. I'll just leave this here for you guys.
Well, thank you so much. We are so honored by so many things that have happened in our music career and, you know, things that some people work for their whole lives, and we've gotten to do in a shorter amount of time, I guess, in our music career to be such a younger artist, I suppose. But we love this community, and we love our hometown of Cherrville, and just like we said, we're very honored, so thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. You want us to come over there or just behind this one?
This is the song we wrote about Grand Ole Opry. I consider it a big honor for us to be able to play there and get to play there quite recently. Also, I live here in Gaston County and call this place home as well. Enjoy the Grand Ole Circle.
(Music) They cut it from the rum and stage in 1974. Roy A. Cup helped to place it just right on the Opry floor. There's a microphone standing in the middle where the chosen get to see. Roots and heels have walked into it, left some scuffs and scars. You can feel the gust of tanks singing in your cheating heart. It survived the flood in 2010. It's not going to show where it's gone missing. The circle can't be broken. It's always there and open with a light on it for those who sing their songs. My little road of Ricky, the place Scruggs and many. Since Peter, but it's been there all along. God bless that grand old circle. For all the years it's been. Dreamers just like us to stand here. Saw it from the wings behind the ropes and burrowings. All the stars that it filled up and we thought there'd be a day that we'd walk into that circle and hear any steps call our names. The circle can't be broken. It's always there and open with a light on it for those who sing their songs. Marty Benson, Patty, the tailor George and Tammy. Since Peter, but it's been there all along. God bless that grand old circle. For all the years it's been. Dreamers just like us to stand here. It will always be there. It'll live on and on. Other dreamers will stand on it long after we're gone. That circle can't be broken. It's always there and open with a light on it for those who sing their songs. This one here in Jimmy's city, the red and tall in me. Since Peter, but it's been there all along. God bless that grand old circle. For all the years it's been. Dreamers just like us to stand here. For all the years it's been. Dreamers just like us to stand here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
We, we, we are blessed to have had individuals from this area to be a part of that circle, and you have added to its richness, and those of us who have been there on several occasions certainly understand that, and that song was very poetic for what you do.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a picture made up here right quick before you get started?
And Dr. Maddox, we'd also like to get you up for a photo after I finish. If you don't mind seeing something. Thank you.
Do you want us to step up?
Adam, Dr. Maddox is going to come up. Adam, Dr. Maddox is going to come up. We also have Sheriff's Department here, Miss. Thank you all. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we have a musical guest every meeting.
We can do that, as long as it's those two. They don't know that I grew up having to listen to your two students, Jonah Hi and Chris Hi, my brother-in-law and nephew. So I had to hear it, so it was very well-welcome. The next proclamation is proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Accepting this is, obviously, our District Attorney Travis Page is doing a wonderful job, and I can't say enough about the job you're doing here, and thank you. And Ms. Tara Joyner, who is Director of Hope United Survivor Network. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, men, and children of every age, background, and belief, with nearly 1 in 3 women and 1 in 6 men in the United States have suffered from severe physical violence by intimate partner. And whereas, Hope United Survivor Network implemented the danger assessment of law enforcement and collaboration with the Gaston County District Attorney's Office and law enforcement jurisdictions. And whereas, domestic violence programs in Gaston County provide essential lifesaving services survivors, their families, and community. And whereas, Hope United Survivor Network, the Kathy Mayberry Kloneger Center, and many community partners have worked together through coordinated community response teams and continue to meet the needs of domestic violence survivors. And whereas, Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and show the support of numerous organizations, individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance needed to victims. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims October 23 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urges citizens in all of Gaston County to speak out against domestic violence and support local efforts to assist survivors of these crimes. In finding help and healing if they need, this to be adopted on the 24th day of October 2023. I'll now ask the District Attorney, Mr. Page, please say a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of this distinguished board, Dr. Eagle, County Manager, and staff. Thank you especially for this proclamation and for the words of this proclamation and for the acknowledgement of the role that domestic violence and the impact that it plays in this community, and thank you for spreading awareness this month of October. But thank you most of all for not just your words, but this board's action. I look at Commissioner Kloneger, and I see the storied work that you've done over the years to combat domestic violence in this community. But this board altogether as a whole, what you've done to create and fund and staff a family justice center in this county, Hope United, something that is commented on and remarked and complimented throughout this state. When I meet with other district attorneys in other parts of North Carolina, they are very excited about the work that you guys are doing as a board and as a county, and so thank you for making this possible. Thank you for what you've done to empower your law enforcement, to provide them the tools that they need, to help us implement a danger assessment for law enforcement to identify the most serious domestic violence offenders in this county and to aggressively prosecute them. Thank you for what you've done to support my office and the folks that work here and around this courthouse. Your actions have not gone unnoticed, and they are certainly appreciated. You know, this county, over the weekend, experienced a very dark day, a very horrible instance of domestic violence. And we are going to experience the dark days every now and then, but thankfully, there is hope. There is light at the end of the tunnel for Gaston County, and the hope is here in this room. It's with this board and your commitment and your resolve to ending domestic violence, to breaking the cycle, and to making this community a safer place for not just my generation, but for the generations to come. And so, thank you. I applaud you tonight and every day for what you're doing for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's very difficult to follow. I will agree with everything that Travis has to say here. The work that we are doing in this community is something to be very proud of, and nothing happens alone. So it's through our collaboration and partnership that we are able to reach those that need help the most. So thank you very much for everything you do, and thank you for the support here in this county. Thank you.
I will now ask Ms. Misty McDaniel, the Family and Children Services Coordinator, and Ms. Jessica Clark Rice. Also, is Steve still here? Sorry, Steve, going to make you work tonight. Get paid more when you get closer. Excuse me. Whereas, each of us have a responsibility in individual and neighbor communities and citizens of Gaston County to recognize all the children need love, support, and safe and secure place to call home. Whereas, for children who are born into circumstances that cannot meet their ongoing needs, adoption provides healthy and loving families and environments which sustain children as they grow and confident and successful adults. Whereas, families who choose the life-changing path of adoption make a meaningful and lasting difference in the lives of someone, of the most vulnerable children and young people in our society. And whereas, not all children waiting to be adopted are newborns. Many older youth who live in foster care also deserve to be adopted. And whereas, during Adoption Awareness Month, we celebrate all those individuals and families who have welcomed a child in their hearts and to their homes through adoption. We express our profound appreciation for all the women and men who help make the adoptions possible, and whereas, the collaboration of both public and private adoption agencies along with the community agencies, religious organizations, and businesses, and others should be recognizing their commitment to the needs of children throughout Gaston County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioner hereby proclaims the month of November 2023 as Adoption Awareness Month, and as an honor in this event, we encourage citizens, community agencies, and faith community, local businesses, and others to celebrate adoption, honor these families, and turn the attention to those children whose lives will be affected forever and changed through the power of adoption. Together, we can work to support, sustain, and secure permanent loving homes for each and every child in Gaston County, this to be adopted on the 24th day of October 2023. I'll now turn it over to some very fine people who give a lot, and it's very hard, so we're very thankful for what you do, and we thank you for your commitment for Gaston County children. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Dr. Eagle. My name is Misty McDaniel, and I am the Adoptions Program Coordinator with the Gaston County Department of Health and Human Services. It's my distinct honor to accept on behalf of the adoption team at the Gaston County Department of Health and Human Services and all the families that have extended their hearts and their homes through the adoption process. I am so honored and privileged to stand before you and share that since last November, our staff has worked diligently to secure 40 Gaston County children with the adoption, and we have eight that are currently pending and should be finalized by the end of the month. We appreciate all the support from our board and the ability to celebrate November as Adoption Awareness Month, and on behalf of the children and the families we serve, we thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here to recognize nine individuals, but what's bigger than the nine individuals is their service to our community. These nine individuals total years of service in excess of 230 years of service to this community in the areas of fire and rescue. That is an outstanding record for these nine individuals. And if I could get those... I'm going to call your names and ask you to join me, then I'll present you a thing. We'll do a photo op as well. Carolyn Friday, 30 years of service. Dwayne Shane Thompson, 10 years of service. William Glover, 50 years of service. Steve Smith, 52 years of service. Austin Beatty, 10 years of service. Vic Beatty, 20 years of service. David Flannery, 20 years of service. And Chris Norman, 20 years of service. The citizens of Gaston County are deeply indebted to you, ladies and gentlemen, and those who couldn't be here tonight for whatever reason, for their, your efforts to protect our community, to be there in our time of need. It takes your service to continue to make Gaston County safe and do what you do for all of us. And we are internally indebted for your efforts. I'd like to thank each of you. And if you would, if any of you would like to speak, you're welcome to say something. Your comments are limited to 30 minutes. If nobody has anything to say, let's all gather at the front, and we'll take a photo op, please.
I want to talk about it while they're here. You see the dedication that we have throughout our community, and we thank you so much because a lot of that, when you first started, everything was volunteer when we first started this. And so that's what it takes, is individuals who give of themselves, and we appreciate what you've done.
And Gaston County has changed dramatically since the days of our all-volunteer rescue and fire service. The world today is not as it was back in the '70s, and we all recognize that. We kind of all long for it to be different, but we're continuing to do that work forward so that we have our community protected as we move forward. But thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me, I'll get this right now. While we transition, I know there's a lot going on, I wanted to announce the one more important proclamation. That will be adopted tonight regarding Operation Green Light for Veterans. Gaston County encourages its citizens to honor our veterans in displaying green lights in the window of their business and/or residence from November 6th through November 12th, knowing that November 11th is Veterans Day. So I wanted to pass that along. The Commission will now take citizens' comments on eight public hearings. Comments will be taken to the following issues: Riverbend Preserve LLC, zoning map change REZ-161, incentive grant for Project Big Fish, incentive grant for Project Seattle, incentive grant for Project Indus, incentive grant for conveyance and land in Project Crane. Say that right? Incentive grant for Project Sequoia. Economic Development Public Hearing for Project Manitoba will not be heard tonight. That hearing has been moved to the November 28, 2023, rescheduled regular meeting. Before I begin the public hearing, let me outline the rules and procedure for the hearings. Citizens who wish to make comment will be recognized by the chair and requested to step to the podium for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes tonight. All questions shall be directed to the chair for response. The chair shall rule all points of order during the hearing. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Motion to go into public hearing.
Motion made by Commissioner, warly seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? Mr. Keger?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearings. Riverbend Preserve LLC, property parcel 310408, located on Highway 16, Mount Holly. The adoption of the resolution to approve interlocal agreement with the local Lincoln County Agreement, adoption of ordinance to approve a development agreement. I would now ask Mr. Donnie Hicks, EDC Director, to provide a brief overview. Once he has completed his comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Mr. Hicks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the project, but also, I think, the importance of this project to the county. I'd also like to recognize tonight, we have Stuart Tate and Bart Shaw, the two principals of Shaw-Tate. They are the owners of the property, the people with whom we've worked with for almost a decade to get this project done. If you remember, this came to you several months ago in a rezoning, and it's a cooperative effort between us and Lincoln County. And I'd be glad to talk about the agreement after this, but I think it's worth noting all the effort that went into this by both counties. This was one of the most difficult projects you can imagine. It's 900 acres. It has immense opportunity with miles of frontage on 16. But it also had immense challenges. We were all the way from East Lincoln High School for water and sewer. So that's miles and millions of dollars to get there. And we didn't even have an interchange or access to the site. So my counterpart, Cliff Brumfield, in Lincoln County have been working on this for roughly a decade to try to get this done. Some have suggested we should be better at our job, but it took that long to get this done. And I just want to go through a couple of things quickly because it speaks about the economic development agreement, but maybe more importantly, how we got there. So I'd like to thank both gentlemen from Shaw-Tate for their patience to do this because they've been heavily engaged in this after they've bought it for a number of years. And I always appreciate their transparency and sincerity in the way that we were treated by them during this period because it was not an easy project to put together. So we had 900 acres, and the project split roughly 50/50 Gaston, Lincoln County. And so not only did we have to figure out what we want to do on our side, but we had to eventually reach an agreement with Lincoln County to make this work. When you looked at the land, Gaston County's side was more suited for residential. The Lincoln County side was more suited for industrial, and theirs was already zoned industrial. So we have been working with them for a long period of time to figure out some way that we could jointly develop this property so that we didn't just do our side, and they didn't just do their side. So some of the challenges that we worked through was getting water and sewer there. So if there's no water and sewer there, Shaw-Tate is going to be responsible for spending somewhere north of $12 million to get the water and sewer there. That's just to get it to the site. That doesn't distribute it through the property. We were fortunate enough to get an $18.5 million appropriation from the General Assembly to help extend the water and sewer from roughly East Lincoln High School, and that will allow the site to be developed. So we solved that problem, and Lincoln County will be operating that part of the project. In order to make sure that we didn't leave anybody out, the Gaston County EDC went and did a study to see who the most logical supplier was. Could have been Mount Holly, could have been East Lincoln, or Lincoln County. And after what we felt like was a very fair, transparent, and unbiased review, we all decided that Lincoln County was the most logical person to serve it for a variety of reasons. So we solved that issue. One of the other things that we worked on for a long period of time was access to the site. There's provision for an interchange at that site by a reservation right away from the DOT, but there was no money to build that. As we got closer to developing the property, the state wanted a super street there. If you're familiar with Lincoln County, they liked to want an Optimus Road. That didn't really fit with the objectives of Lincoln County. Not really an issue for Gaston, but for Lincoln County was an issue. So the DOT then came back in a move that I thought I would never see, and allowed the design of the super street to be non-standard and allow the left-hand turn, if you're familiar with how those work, to be signalized. That feels like in Lincoln County to them, it's safer and gives the trucks better access to getting onto 16. So another major problem solved. We then worked to try to develop plans to address specific issues around the constituents that live in that area. They're used to a largely undeveloped area. Most of that land was owned institutionally by Crescent Land and Timber back in the day. There's not a lot of people ever lived up there. And so we met with the residents that lived there. We had a number of neighborhood meetings. Chairman Brown personally met with a lot of the people that lived there to see what their concerns were going to be. And I think a couple of things came out of that. One, there is a densely developed piece of property there. We were also able to serve, to save 43% of the land as open space, which includes 150-acre easement to the Tallulah Land Conservancy, which matches up to more than 1,300 acres that we've already conserved near the mountain on reservoir. We also had a number of concerns from people that provide water and sewer to the site, or to the counties. Mecklenburg's intake is there, Two Rivers is there, and Mount Holly's is there. So more than a million and a half people depend on that water source from downstream of that site for water. And they were concerned about us protecting the integrity of the water by not developing it or providing significant development restrictions on it in order to not put the water at compromise at some point in the future. So we worked with Shaw-Tate, and we now have the most stringent water preconstruction and post-construction water standards, stormwater standards in the whole county. So they agreed to develop at a standard that is substantially higher than the current one we have. They did that voluntarily. They've also agreed to donate $1,500 per dwelling unit to the school system. Probably won't change the school system's life, but that's a million and a half dollars we didn't have before. And so that's gonna help for any kind of impacts in that region. We also think because it's in the Denver submarket, it will help us raise our average home price. One of the issues that we face is that we have one of the lowest housing values. When you look at median or average housing values throughout the entire region. Most of our peer group have substantially more valuable homes. So in that submarket, we feel like we can have houses that are built at a higher level and attract people that don't currently live here, but might choose to if we had a different level of housing. So we worked on all those things collectively. And so I think one of the things that we came out of this with was the ability to take each constituency's concern and provide meaningful, take that, provide meaningful input to the process, have the developer work with them to address them, have the county to address them, and come out with what I think is probably the best possible outcome. I've been working on this for a decade, and if we were to go back and start this over, I don't think we could come out with a better option than we created. So I'd like to again thank Stuart and Bart for their patience in doing this. And I think it represents a couple of things for the county. The ability for the county employees to work collectively across a number of departments. That's planning, the manager's office, legal, EDC, a whole variety of people worked on this, to work collectively, and maybe more importantly, work collaborative with Lincoln County to come up with an agreement that we could all solve between two boards. Once we had all that done, just because you say you're gonna agree, and having that put on paper and having something you can sign is different. So I'd like to thank Bill Stetser for all the work he did in putting that final agreement together. And if you go through and read it, that's a lot of work to put together, to take the ideas that we had and put them in a document that everyone will finally agree to. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, but I thought it was worthwhile taking a few minutes just to talk about the significance of that development, the process that got us there.
Thank you, Donnie. Any citizens wishing to comment at this time? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Well, first of all, I want to say thank you. Donnie Hicks did his work on this. I don't care how long it took you. If you didn't give up on this project, I want to thank Stuart and Bart. That was, we had a lot of long time working on this to get, and you guys stepped to the table. Brian Ski, and his group, Dr. Eagle and her. This was a collaborative effort, like you said, but a lot of people don't really understand what this project came to fruition as being. And we even got the state as well to help us to combine. So that's how good of a project this was. So a lot of people will see a lot of different things out of this. But I just want to say thank you to you guys for your willingness to listen. And Donnie, thank you for your team because that was, this has been the most outstanding effort I've seen, you know, Bill working with what's going on in Lincoln County, and us having to throw that back and forth, but Alicia and all of you back there, just please thank you so much for what this means to us. But if there are no more additional comments, I would declare the public hearing closed. As you know, this will be two different, separate votes here as we go through adoption of the resolution to approve the interlocal agreement with Lincoln County for the Riverbend Preserve development. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor? Is unanimous. Mr. Tom?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Adoption of the ordinance to approve a development agreement between Gaston County and Lincoln County and the Riverbend Preserve. Do I have a motion for that? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. NSR heard, Mr. Tom. All in favor? Mr. Tom?
Yay.
Is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for that, and thank you guys. The next public hearing is the Gaston Commission will take comments on public hearing zoning map change, REZ-161. Sabrina Brooke Parker is the applicant. I will now ask Ms. Jamie Camberaloo. I'm sorry, she's not here tonight. So Director of Planning, Zoning, and Development Services will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ-23-08-23-00161 is a general rezoning request from Sabrina Brooke Parker for parcel ID number 310159. The property is located on Green Road in Stanley. The applicant is requesting to rezone the .69-acre parcel from the R1 Single Family Limited zoning district and C1 Light Commercial zoning district to the R2 Single Family Moderate zoning district. The subject property is located in the northeast corner of the county, north of Stanley and east of High Shoals. This ortho photo shows the subject parcel and identifies the parcel as currently vacant and is surrounded by residential homes. The surrounding zoning districts in the immediate vicinity include R1 and C1, with R2, R3, and I2 in the larger vicinity. If this request is approved, any uses in the R2 Single Family Moderate zoning district will be permitted in accordance with standards and regulations as adopted in the UDO. The site will be served by utilities by a private well and private septic system. As her roads, the site is along Green Road, which is an NC DOT-maintained road. This map shows who was notified about tonight's public hearing. Staff mailed notices on October 9th, and a sign was placed on-site, all in accordance with general statutes. Staff has not yet received any calls or inquiries about this request. The subject parcel is located in Area 3, Riverfront Gaston, northeast Gaston of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Key issues for citizens in this area include the preservation of open space, road improvements, and better connectivity to other areas of the county and throughout the region, and maintaining the rural feel of the community. The future land use designation is rural. This designation is characterized as having plenty of open space, along with farmstead-style housing and opportunities for agribusiness. Residential homes are located on large lots and are set back on the roads they front upon. The county's TRC reviewed this project and had no comments. In addition, there are no planned transportation projects in the vicinity. The Gaston County Planning Board heard this request at its October 2nd meeting and recommended approval by a 10-to-zero vote. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Ms. Peyton, I'm sorry, I had the wrong page earlier, but Ms. Peyton Ratchford was the one presenting.
That's okay.
Are there any comments from the applicant at this time wishing to touch, speak? It's up to you. Yes, ma'am. If you just please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Sabrina Parker. 5627 Green Road in Stanley is where I live. Right beside that, where I'm applying for the rezoning, is my parents' house. So we just kind of want to live in a little commune. So, yeah, please. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any citizens wishing to comment on this at this time? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? If there are no additional comments, I would declare the public hearing closed. And I just want to recap and say that the Planning Board has unanimously recommended approval of this project. Is there a motion from the floor? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor? Mr. Keger? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Stetser, will you please provide the current consistency statement?
Mr. Chairman, may it please the board, I'll submit a written statement of consistency to the clerk.
Thank you, sir. The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve a Level 1 incentive grant and authorize an economic development agreement with Project Big Fish. I will now ask Ms. Alicia Summy, Ms. EDC, to provide an overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Summy?
Thank you, Chairman Brown. So Project Big Fish is an existing company here in Gaston County looking to expand their existing industry by 30,000 square feet in the county, and that's gonna be about $2 million investment here in the county. They plan to create 10 new jobs within 18 months in this expansion, and this Level 1 grant will be a five-year grant totaling around $35,000.
Are there any comments at this time wishing to be had on this public hearing? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? How big is the fish? If there are no additional comments, I would declare the public hearing closed. I want to thank you, and so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion made by Commissioner Warley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? Commissioner Keger? I think he said he was leaving after that one, sorry. So is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The Gaston County Commission will now take citizens' comments on a public hearing to approve a Level 2 incentive grant for, and grant and authorize an economic development agreement for Project Seattle. I will now ask Ms. Alicia Summy to please come up from Economic Development and provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Summy, again.
Thank you again, Chairman Brown. So Project Seattle was brought to us by the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. We've been working on this for quite a while. They're asking for a Level 1 or a Level 2 grant here in the county, so it kind of just depends on where they're... depends on where their investment falls. It's right at the line. This is a Fortune 500 company considering $21 million investment to establish a facility here in Gaston County. They plan to create 107 new jobs with an average salary of $25.82 an hour, which is higher than the county average wage. The facility that they're looking at is in Gateway 85. Their facility will split Lowell and Gastonia as 300,000 square feet, excuse me, 350,000 square feet that they'll occupy in that building. The city of Lowell has already approved the incentive grants, and it will go before the city of Gastonia on November 7th. Project Seattle provides warehouse, logistics, and distribution services, and they're considering three other states for this project.
Are there any citizens wishing to comment on this public hearing at this time? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed, and I will ask for a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Tell you right now, y'all are the greatest people in the world tonight. The Gaston County Commission will take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve a Level 2 incentive grant to authorize an economic development agreements for Project Indus. I will now ask Economic Director, Economic Development Director Donnie Hicks to provide a brief overview, and once he has completed his comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, if you can see that, we have a developer that wants to buy a site at the Edgewood Road interchange on the southwest corner. It's close to Bessemer City, but it'll actually be in the city limits of Gastonia. And they plan to construct several buildings, maybe about 400,000 square feet, these would be about four buildings. The difference between these and a lot of the other buildings we've had is not duplicative of what we've already had. They're going to build smaller buildings of around 100,000 square feet. What that does is open up more opportunity for us in the heart of the market. That's the size of building that a local person can take or somebody from the outside can take. And there's a tremendous shortage of that in the region. Indus has a portfolio of more than 25 million square feet. They tend to be a long-term owner. They're not building these to flip them to someone else. They'll be a long-term owner. The county actually looked at this site before, passed, before we did Apple Creek, but they have institutional money allows them to spend more money on site development, because the site development is unusually expensive at that location. So I think it'll add to the community, and what they're asking for is a Level 2 grant to help, just like we've done with the other buildings, provide incentives and help defray some of the development costs that they're going to have. I'd also like to point out that Brian Skiba worked with the DOT to get them an entrance. The entrance right off the interstate is very close to the controlled access to the interstate, and we were able to get them a right-in, right-out, which is not perfect, but the original plan was a right-out only, which basically kills the park. You'd get off the interstate, but you wouldn't be able to get only into the park. You couldn't get out of it, going all the way down to 74 and coming all the way back up to the interchange. So the right-in, right-out makes it a little bit more palatable for them. And so I think, given the uniqueness of it and what it adds to the market, it's a good project for us. It probably won't be built immediately because of all the issues in the capital markets, but they're going to stake out this and have this as a long-term hold to build these buildings. I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Thank you, sir. Any citizens wishing to comment at this time? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Hovis?
Well, Mr. Hicks, are there any proposed improvements to the Edgewood Road area?
Yes, sir.
There for this project?
So it won't occur immediately, but because of what's occurring above there, most of those improvements are being driven by what's happening on the north side of the road. But there will be improvements made to Edgewood Road because of the Amazon facility. The facility was built by the developers in Charlotte Foundry. And then if Trinity builds across the street, all that is driving improvements on the north side.
And DOT's proposed widening of 85, if I'm not mistaken, stops at Bessemer City Road, not Edgewood Road, correct?
Yeah, it will not reach Edgewood Road, but the next phase to match up with what's happening in Cleveland County should pick that up.
I'm just saying, we need to put this in front of-
It needs to be on the list, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing for this. I will ask for a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Worley. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. As we well know, Project Manitoba was pulled until next month. The Gaston County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve a Level 2 incentive grant and approve the conveyance of 15.56 acres of land, Lot 8, in the Apple Creek Business Park to authorize an economic development agreement for Project I will now ask EDC Director Donnie Hicks to provide a brief overview. Once he has completed his comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a conveyance of property. To make this easier to understand, I've got a site plan up there, but this is a site next to Hans Kissel, so if you came to the groundbreaking, it'd be on the west side of the road, right next to Hans Kissel. This is a project that we've chased for somewhere over three years, and now it's come down to three different sites, and it's a developer-driven project. They're going to hire a developer to build the building and lease it back to them. So ultimately, if they choose Gaston County, the sale will be to the developer on behalf of the company. And we've chased this for, again, for three years. It's a project that we want. It's automotive-related. They invest, they will invest about $21 million and create 46 jobs at an annual salary of $59,000. County average is 46, our county manufacturing average is 56. So still, again, above the county average. We expect that they would need to move on construction by January of '25, and so one of the questions that they have of us was how fast could we move? So I had all the county people there talking about what we can do to facilitate it. They're not interested in negotiating price for the property. Their issue right now is how fast we can convey it. It's going to be hard for somebody to beat us on the ability to do that. They may choose another site for another reason, but it won't be because we can't move fast enough to do it. So tonight, this approval hopefully is important to us going back to them and saying that we're ready to go, and then demonstrating how fast we can move. And there still are three sites in two states under consideration.
Are there any citizens wishing to take comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Hovis?
Mr. Hicks, the pre-grading and development that we've done on Lot 8, is it already substantially meet the requirements for their building plan?
Yes, sir, it does. They will start out with somewhere around 60,000 square feet, which would allow them to expand in the future. And so, given that, that site's in such a state of preparation that it will not take a lot of grading to get it ready to go.
Basically shovel-ready.
Yeah, they'll go in and grade, do the final grading, and be ready to go. And that's one of the reasons they're attracted to the site.
Certainly.
It lessens, it not only helps them with time, and that's a diminishing risk for them. So a big risk for them in other sites is how long it's going to take, and what do we not know about the site.
And that's another plus for the way we did and approached Apple Creek.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Worley?
No, motion to approve.
Let me close the public hearing real quick. If there are no additional comments, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. It's a busy night for EDC, I can promise you that. We're very happy. County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve a Level 2 or Level 3 incentive grant to authorize an economic development agreement for Project Sequoia. I will now ask Ms. Alicia Summy, Assistant Director of Economic Development, to provide a brief overview, and once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. Project Sequoia, this is another project we've been working with EDPNC on, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. They're considering a total investment of $34 million in machinery and equipment and to upfit the former Cutter Building in Stanley, which closed its store in July, I believe is when they had the last employees leave. So it hasn't been vacant very long. They're very interested in this building. They anticipate creating 230 jobs with an average annual wage of $46,000 a year. Project Sequoia is an automotive Tier 1 supplier, and they're also looking at three other states. We expect to hear a decision from them sometime this week, is what we were told.
Thank you so much. Are there any citizens wishing to comment at this time on this project? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? If there are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing closed, and I will ask for a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. This concludes tonight's public hearing, and I want to say, I want to give you guys the economic development. Hey, that's a, you guys don't understand the projects that we have looked at in just tonight, and what that means, and you guys have worked it out. Donnie, thank you to you and your staff. Next month, we need double that.
The man hours-
But thank you so much. You have no idea what that means, and especially for what, you know, we've done in the past couple of days as well, so thank you. We'll ask for the approval of the business agenda. If there are no revisions to the business agenda or any other items that need to be pulled, I do have some revisions. Item N has been deleted, and staff has advised that that item is no longer necessary, so item N was deleted for appropriate social security, social services, sorry. The additional for Operation Greenlight was added to the agenda, and I recognized that earlier, from November 6th to November 12th. Other than those two, do I hear a motion to approve the business agenda with the revisions mentioned? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Worley. Are there any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item is approval of the minutes. You were provided a draft minutes for the regular meeting of 9:26. Are there any revisions? Do I hear any other revisions to approve the minutes as presented? Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. I appreciate you guys on this. Our next item is citizens' recognition. Our next item, a portion of the board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. This comment period is not intended to require the commission or staff to answer any questions or provide a response. Questions requiring response shall be answered as soon as possible through the Gaston County Manager's Office. Citizens' recognition will be limited tonight to three minutes. As you call your name, please step to the podium, and the first person to speak is Mr. Brian Harper. If you will please, after that will be Crystal Lee, Mary Ed McMahon, and Jim after that. Mr. Harper?
Hello. My name is Brian Harper. I live at 1953 Heptsaba Church Road, considered in Bessemer City. I'm in Cherriville Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today and express a couple of my concerns about Piedmont Lithium Company. On October 13th, 2023, I visited a town hall event in Cherriville for the Carolina Lithium Project. This event was set up as an informational event for the community that would be affected by this project. I immediately experienced an elaborate PR campaign to influence any potential persons that may have doubts about this project. Every one of the 14 different stations were filled with beautiful pictures and displays explaining how amazing and beneficial this project would be. There's one display that I would like to share with you that really caught my attention. It was labeled Mining and Reclamation. This display was showcasing how Piedmont Lithium would reclaim the land after mining and then transform it into a modern-day utopia. When I asked about this, the Piedmont representative assured me that the area would only be used for parks, walking trails, leisure activities, and leisure activities for the citizens of Gaston County. Here are the exact pictures from the display. Here we have elaborate playgrounds. We have tranquil meadows as far as the eye can see. Walking trails among beautifully sculpted waste rock mounds, and, last but not least, a unique and appealing golf course. And here is an ironic turn of events. A few moments later, another visitor, Crystal Lee, which will follow me, was told that the area would be reclaimed and offered as industrial opportunities for corporations to come into the area. So again and again, we come up on half-truths, deceptions, and dishonesty of Piedmont Lithium. The dates and times of the meetings were also not sensitive to the working population. The meetings occurred in the morning and early afternoon weekdays. They were also scarcely attended. So, in my opinion, the only way that Piedmont Lithium is finding support is to offer payoffs, donations, sponsorships, and anything else to attempt to buy the goodwill from neighbors and corporations. Thank you so much for your time. Also, I would like to introduce the Stop Piedmont Lithium, over 2,800 signatures to date, that I would like to bring to you.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Mr. Fred. All in favor?
I'll leave these signatures with you. All right, and also, this is my presentation, I'd like to put those into minutes.
Just go do that, and pick those pictures, you sell that table right there, and we'll have to pick it up.
Okay. Thank you. Would y'all like to look at these pictures?
Yes. Wait, wait, wait.
Well, there's some in there for you, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Crystal Lee. I live at 551 Rudessel Road, Lincolnon in Gaston County. First, I want to just thank you all for this time. Tonight, I want to comment on the proposal, the proposed Carolina Lithium Project. About two weeks ago, like Brian mentioned, on October 13th, I also attended the community town hall event in Cherriville hosted by Piedmont Lithium. I received information on project overview, reclamation, and blasting. I was roughly there around noon for lunch, and from the information I received, mostly I was perplexed by other plans for reclamation. I was told by a Piedmont representative that a part of their reclamation plan is to sublease their land to vendors for industrial and other business use during and years after Piedmont Lithium's initial use of mining. I left that meeting with more questions and more concerns, just because I have small children. Tonight, I just wanted to share my concern, and again, thank you all.
Feel like I should have brought my guitar or something next time. Dear Commissioners and Chairman, thank you so much. My name is Mary McMahon, and I live on 9091 Loafers Glory Trail in Gaston County, actually in Lincolnon. So we have 25 acres, and my husband and I purchased this property in 2021. We farm organically, along with our son, who lives next door on 11 acres. We have cows, goats, sheep, chickens, and a doodle who keeps everyone in line, including us. I'm here to voice my concern over the proposed pit mine in Gaston County and the consequences it would have on the quality of life in our county and in my neighborhood. The list is long of the negative impact it would have on our environment, our water quality, including and not limited to arsenic and cancer-causing agents, possible loss of water, and not even knowing what would happen with the water table, because all of us have wells and septic. The negative effects on property values in the area where we are prolifically growing since my son has moved there in 2015. Blasting and noise concerns, as well as the fact the land would be ruined after the company has profited billions. My future and the future of my grandchild in this area is in dire jeopardy. These are very legitimate concerns, especially when Piedmont Lithium has not been forthcoming with any of the immediate neighbors, who would be negatively impacted by this project. My husband and I have never heard from this company, and as a bird flies, we are a mile from the border. We've had nothing mailed to us, no representatives coming to us. I have friends that have had flyers in the mail to purchase their property. No one employed by Piedmont Lithium has any skin in the game, and by that I mean, none of them owns property or live in the area that they would be impacted. I know that Piedmont Lithium does not yet have a license to operate at this time, but not only do I want to tell you my objection to this project, but I will continue to keep you updated on it, and I will politely continue to engage each and every one of you on this subject.
My name is Jim McMahon. I live at 9091 Loafers Glory Trail. As my wife said, we have purchased the farm. I actually had retired in 2020. I now work part-time at Southern Estates and supply many of your workers with seed and other items that are used around the county. I did go to the meeting in Cherriville, and the one thing that struck me, and that's what I wanted to come up here and talk about, was all the litany of concerns that- what I wanted to come up here and talk about, was all the litany of concerns that my wife expressed. They had stations addressing, and every one of those stations said that, based upon their model, well, I worked corporate for 30 years, and I know that you can create a model that will support any viewpoint that you want. And I believe that's what they're doing, and that's what I came up to say, and I appreciate your time, and I hope you will consider that as you move forward with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for the approval of the consent agenda, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Worley and seconded by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Items were pulled, the items added by majority were no. And just before we get to appointments, Commissioner Fraley?
Yeah, I got several here. Got two new appointments, both to Sarah Local Planning, Colby Hebner and John Cole. I got three reappointments, all to the Transportation Advisory Board, Mark Lambfair, Audra Ellis, and Shelley Allman.
I'll second that by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two for the Sarah Local Planning. First, an application for Stephanie Westbrook, and also from Erin Worster. I would make those in a motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Cloninger?
I have an application received from Andre Stevens for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, as well as a reappointment of Laverne Partlow to the Transportation Advisory Board.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Johnson?
I have a few. Region F Aging Advisory Committee, Gaila Woody. Council on Aging, Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, Gaila Woody. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Victor Rodriguez. A reappointment to Transportation Advisory Board, Tina Stogner. And a reappointment to the Transportation Advisory Board, Ms. Terry Sanford.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two new appointments, both to Sarah Local Planning Committee. One of those is Anderson Holder, and the other is Anthony Brett.
I'll second that. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I have a few here at Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Application received by Vanessa Palmer. The Jury Commission, application received by Scott Sheehan. Sarah Local Planning Committee, LEPC, Scott Wyatt. Appointment requested. Transportation Advisory Board, requested, reappointment requested by Mr. Joanne Rackster. Transportation Advisory Board, Mr. Julio Peralta, requested reappointment. Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Don, I will tell you about that change on that with Commissioner Cloninger. So you have that. Make sure we have no fulls. One full, and the full board is for QNRC, Mr. John Loftus. B. B. Reappointment requested. All in favor? Seconded by Commissioner Worley. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Reports? Mr. Fraley? Mr. Worley?
None denied, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cloninger?
I have. I attended the board meeting of the Gaston County Museum and Board History, Art and History, and I also attended Cotton Ginning Days.
Thank you for doing that. And Mr. Johnson?
No reports.
Mr. Hovis?
Mr. Chair, I have prepared a small update for the board. I'm handing it out to you at this present time. This is accomplishments of Caramont Health, as I'm the board liaison on the Caramont Board of Directors. We have had a phenomenal year since July the 1st of last year, and I'm going to let these speak for themselves, and I'm going to ask that Communications put this up on the website so everyone can see. It's too much to go into detail now, but I will say, just for the public record, that we're looking at an opening date of the second site in Belmont. We do have all the switch gears in place. The wiring is taking place. That was the major holdup in the supply chain because there are interior accoutrements that they could not finish until the building was conditioned. That has been accomplished, and we're moving forward with warp speed. But we're looking at October of 2024 for beginning occupancy and taking patients. Things are moving at a great pace. The site is, I had an opportunity to tour it several weeks ago, and I carried Dr. Eagle with me, so she got the opportunity to see everything still opened up. It's amazing. It's going to be a phenomenal space. They're taking some of the technology that we learned when we built the fourth floor, the urgent care tower and the room design. Some of that is being incorporated in the new facility as well. I think it's just going to be another gem for the county and certainly a gem for Caramont.
G E M, not G Y.
I said gem. I didn't spell it.
Thank you, sir. I also attended Cotton Ginning Days, but I want to say a special thank you to Alicia for doing something special this year. Todd, if you'll go ahead and put it up, our own, very own, Ms. Donna S. Buff was the recipient of the Women Who Rock. And you can see her there in her lovely picture of her award, so congratulations, Ms. Donna. And y'all don't know how hard it is to surprise Ms. Donna because she does all the lifting and hard work for Wada, but we got you tonight, and it took the place of your Halloween picture, so there you go. But thank you, Donna, for all you do. You mean that much to us and our board. You represent us well, so thank you. So we'll go from there. We'll go to the newest assistant manager tonight, Matt Roten. County Manager's report.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Wow. Esquire Stetser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening I have no report.
Thank you, Barry White. There are no other matters that need to be brought forth at this time. This includes our meeting for tonight. Our next combined work session is a regular meeting, is November the 28th at 6:00 PM here in the Harley B. Gaston Junior's Public Forum Courthouse. I want to thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please relate them to our Woman Who Rocks, Donna S. Buff at 704-866-3196. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Go get 'em, Vincent. Good night.